Good evening, the time is 5:06 PM. It is Tuesday, January 7th, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the city secretary, please call the roll. Here.
Coach?
Here.
Ellison?
Sheehan?
Here.
Rizzo?
Here.
Villa Lobos?
Here.
Tenorio.
All right, we have five members present, we have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments, anyone which has come forward may do so now. Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. Next up, executive session.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the City Council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The City Council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics. One, pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071, TDS Contract, Veterans Memorial, RFQ for 104 South Burleson Street, Police Department Facility Update, Uptown Park, Inner Mandico Development Agreement, and then possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551.072, Center Street, Old Stage, Coach Road Project. And then convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087, Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city. Project While Blue, Restaurant Incentive Program, Incentive for Downtown Property.
Thank you, Councilmember Sheehan, we're now in executive session. Can the record please show Councilwoman Tenorio as present? We can all just stare at Councilwoman Tenorio. I'll go ahead and start. Good evening, the time is 7:04 PM. It is Tuesday, January the 7th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the city secretary.
Mr. Mayor, before we do roll.
Yeah, I already know what you're going to say. We need to adjourn the last meeting.
Yes, not just that, but I thought a moment of silence for the attack that's happened.
Okay. Councilwoman Tenorio informed us, we've been, for the last two hours, we've been in executive session, so the majority of us up here are very unaware if there have been developments and international conflicts. We do know that it seems that tension is escalating, and so to councilmembers' request, if y'all would all please join us in a moment of silence as we think and pray for our troops and those who are affected by this conflict. Before we call the roll, I'd like to announce that no action was taken during our executive session. There will be no action taken now on a motion to adjourn that meeting. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero, so I don't need to reopen this meeting, do I? Page, since I've already opened this one, can I just? Okay, all right, so next up is calling the meeting to order with the city secretary, please call the roll. Here.
Coach?
Here.
Ellison?
Present.
Sheehan?
Here.
Rizzo?
Here.
Villa Lobos?
Here.
Tenorio?
Present.
Okay, all seven members are present, we have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Tenorio.
I'd like to make a motion to per the city council's special meeting minutes for August the 28th of 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Tenorio, seconded by Councilmember Villa Lobos, and in further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, that you direct those comments to the mayor and council, and that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit it to either myself or the city secretary. I currently have one form, and that is Ms. Cindy Slovet Martin, who I never saw. Is Cindy here? She's coming to register a position but not testify for Agenda Item Number 10. I guess I should have read that part. That's the only one that I have. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. It's now closed. Next up, presentation, police cadets introduction. Chief Barnett.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Proton and council. My name is Jeff Barnett, chief of police for the record. We're here tonight to celebrate the return of our police cadets that we sent off some 23 now weeks ago to attend the University of Texas Police Academy. We told you upfront when we sent them that they were going to represent us well because we knew we had well-qualified candidates. We had great selections coming to our department, and that's exactly what happened. So I'm pleased to briefly introduce you tonight to our newest six Kyle Police Officers who have graduated from the academy. First, we have a corrections officer with 10 years of experience, Officer Donald Lovelace. Next, corrections officer with four years of experience, Officer Mark Spencer. A University of Texas at Austin graduate with a bachelor's in public relations, Officer Sarah Brooksford. A Texas State graduate with a bachelor's in criminal justice, Officer David Call, who also has a father in law enforcement for 28 years, so he comes from a law enforcement family background. Next, we have a military air force veteran of 11 years, Staff Sergeant Officer Eric Champion. And last but not least, we have an EMT of 15 years of experience, six of those serving our citizens here in Kyle, and we're lucky to have him. He also graduated from the police academy as the designated Top Gun and the premier top cadet awards, Officer William Orr. As we depart, I'll tell you that their academy was over 800 hours of grueling police work and physical fitness. Their academy was 22 weeks long. Now they come back to us to enter our PODC program and our FTO program, which is where they will learn the city of Kyle, our geography, our computer systems. And not only will they know how to be a police officer, they will know how to serve here in the city of Kyle. So thank you very much, officers, thank you very much, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, Chief. I know these officers, we're going to want to probably get a photo with them. Before we do, I'm going to open up to the council to give some comments.
You know, I don't know what to say. I'm a fellow law enforcement officer, so coming out of the academy and starting your new career here at the city, it's that one thing we want you to know is that we've been waiting for you, and you are people that have the opportunity to be good stewards and good representation for the city. And your community engagement efforts are going to be tremendous for us. You all look good in your blues. It brings back lots of memories, and we understand there's going to be ups and downs. But those ups and downs come with good support. And you have a very unified front as a council that supports the mission and the duties that you guys have been charged with. So understand that this council supports you, supports everything that you do, supports you as individuals, because you are individuals in how you do your jobs, but the mission of what you do for the city. And you will see a lot of changes in the city with growth. There are a lot of individuals out there taxing us as public safety personnel, specifically officers. You come in eyes wide open in understanding what those issues can be, but understand that when you do it with your heart and you're doing it in the right mindset, that we will support largely the decisions that you make, as long as they're in that good vein. I know without a doubt with the leadership of the chief and your frontline supervisors that you will have good policies in place, and they will be ingrained, so that when you get into that position, that you have to make a fight-or-flight decision, that you're going to make the best decision in the best interest of not only yourself and safety, but the interest of the city. I can't say it enough. We support what you are and what you do. You are the people that hold the line for a lot of us, keep us safe, keep our children safe, keep our homes and property safe, and we can't thank you enough for taking this opportunity on with the city of Kyle and for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ellison.
Yeah, I just want to second, third, fourth, and fifth, everything that Councilmember Villa Lobos just said, and I will try to be brief with my comments, but I just want to thank each and every one of you all, because you could have chosen another agency. You chose Kyle, and we welcome you all. We hope that you all feel the Kyle hospitality. We have a wonderful and great and supportive Kyle Citizens Police Academy that is always there to support our PD. We have a wonderful program and a great leadership in our Kyle agency from chief on down, and so we're so happy to have you a part of the family. Hope to see you around town. Hopefully you won't have to deal with a lot of crime, but we're so happy to have you all here, and thank you, Chief, for reading out their credentials and accomplishments before you started here. Obviously, we've got a great crop in this six, and so we're so happy to have you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Rizzo.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for wanting to serve the citizens of Kyle. Thank you for your service, for stepping up. I know you had to go through a lot through the academy to get to this point, but our requirements are high, and I know you meet those requirements, so thank you for your service. Just know that we're going to give you, as a council, the tools you need to do your job and serve this community and protect them, but on top of that, just know that we'll be keeping you in our prayers that you get home safely every night, and we'll remember you every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Tenorio.
I'm going to be brief, which I never am, so welcome to the family.
Whoa, welcome to the family.
Welcome to the family.
I just actually want to add on to something Chief said about the 22 weeks of training and obviously your extensive experience and background. It is not without value to this community, because as we're all learning in our community and policing just across the nation, there are no end to the amount of precarious situations that you can find yourself in with all different manner of men, women, and children. And so thank you for putting that training to the degree in your mind that we know that you did, for preparing yourself for what comes ahead, and I think this council has already said it very well, but when you find yourself in those very tense situations that cause you to be frustrated and stressed, you have support, overwhelming support in this community, on this dais, among your fellow officers and across this nation. People support you, and we support you. So thank you very much, and if there's no other comments, I'd like to bring y'all forward with Chief and the rest of our officers that would like to participate, we'd like to take a photo with you.
I don't want you in it. I don't want you in it. Stand up to the side. A lot of you have known me long enough to know that I got to squish. Are we ready? All right.
This is a standing item that we've added, ad hoc committee update on the police facility. I've got this listed for Chief. Yeah, that's okay. If anyone on the committee wants to give any, just very brief updates as to where we are and the direction that we're going, it does not have to be overly extensive at this point.
Well, currently, we're working with a firm, the design firm, with regards to a facility. We are currently negotiating the fees for various different stages of development of this facility. We are currently talking to that particular organization, and we have done site visits of police facilities that they have built into the same design. We are currently working also with, we currently have some scheduled visits with contractors for various types of materials that could be used in the construction of this particular facility. We're looking at the overall square footage, and we are in the current phase or the beginning phases of planning the usage of its current footprint. There's a lot more work that needs to be done, there's a tight, tight timeline that needs to be addressed. We feel very confident that we can fit that timeline and that we can bring forward quite a bit of information to be prepared for the bond language and presenting it to our citizens for their guidance and their direction. So we have a meeting scheduled on Thursday, and I know there's going to be a site visit again with one of the contractors that would supply some of the materials, project, you know, prospectively, some of the materials for this particular facility, and that is on Thursday at 3:00 PM.
Okay. Anything else to add? The bottom line of what I heard is that we're continuing to move forward.
Absolutely.
With all haste to deliver a facility that is reasonable and well-thought-out, and that's something that we think the citizens will support.
And Mayor, there are some costs associated with it, but I think it's too, you know, it's too soon to discuss those particular price points. I think it would be, it wouldn't be prudent for us to discuss that at this point, because none of those have been solidified. So we hope here within the next couple of weeks that we will have some, we'll be a lot closer and then to move forward, and I think that's when we will, maybe the next update coming in the next meeting, we'll have a little bit more information to really solidify the direction that we're going to take.
Okay. And just so the citizens know, just because we're in a rush timeline, we're not going to cut corners. We're going to do our due diligence to make sure that we have the best facility for officers. We're going to do our homework on this building.
Yeah, I think we're in the, yeah, you're right. We're in a direction of something that's state-of-the-art, and our goal standards are very high, and at the same time, we have a certain level of expediency that we want to follow, but we're about action, and we're trying to get to that.
Yeah, I concur, and I just want to reiterate, and to Councilmember Rizzo's point, this is actually a continuation of something that happened over almost two years ago, with the Brinkley Sergeant Study and everything. It's all a culmination of coming together, and we're using all that information and that data and that due diligence that we need to do in order to bring forward a product that our citizens can understand what we're trying to do and what the bond that we're requesting, will be requesting for in November is about. So I'm happy with the progress, and hopefully we can continue that.
Okay. Any other comments? In case the public needs a refresher, the subcommittee, as authorized by council, is Councilmember Ellison, Councilmember Rizzo, Councilmember Villa Lobos, Chief Barnett, and a respected member in the community who has a background in supporting our police department, Mr. Mike Rubsum. Is that the entirety of the committee at this point? They're going to be, once we get to the next couple of stages, and James Earp, we'll be looking to engage the community much more in this process, once we can get a few tent poles lined up. Is that fair to say? Okay, awesome. Any other comments on this item? All right, next up, Agenda Item Number Three, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Leon Barba, city engineer. The holidays that we had recently, I don't have a lot of fresh updates for you, so some of these will appear to be the same that we had last time, so I'll go ahead and get Lehman Road, last pay estimate, we were at 46% complete. We did pave that section of Lehman from Primrose to, I'm sorry, from 150 back to Masonwood, so that was paved. Unfortunately, there was a little bit of a problem with the paving material, so we're working with the contractor, understand what happened, and taking additional tests, which we won't be paying for, but there'll be additional tests run on that material to see what's happened. There was some spalling in the mix that was laid down, so we'll be working with the contractor very closely and making sure that's taken care of properly. Again, it is open from Primrose to 150, and the bridge work at Steeplechase Park will begin next month. They'll start closing off that section of Lehman Road. And again, we're anticipating having this project completed in August of 2020. Burleson Street, our latest pay estimate is at 66%. The section from Center to Rodriguez is open to local traffic, and there's some workers going on, working in the area at this time. North of Rodriguez to the south of the roundabout is still closed. There's still some work that's needed at the church, at the retaining wall, and the detention ponds still need some work in there to be completed. The utility crews that we've been talking about, they're working right now between Rodriguez and the railroad track. Union Pacific is still planning to come in, at the point they haven't told us yet, but they're going to also redo all the planking in there and widen out that section. Our estimated completion for that is June of 2020.
Leon, before we move on, I have some questions about that particular location, especially in dealing with Silverado subdivision. And I sent an email earlier today with regards to some of the right-of-way issues that we're still having at the entry to Silverado off of Burleson. And I think some of the things were there, is that there was an agreement with regards to moving a pipe for irrigation to some of the landscape in that particular area. The homeowners association was told that they would be able to work with that particular location, and they've come to find out that, I would imagine, they probably had to remove quite a bit, and they're not quite sure whether there's still a full line for them to utilize into their irrigation service there. So I went and took some pictures, I sent you some pictures, and so what we're trying to do is, I know it's on the line of the right-of-way, although in direction by Joanne Garcia to them, from what I understand, there were some issues with one of the lines going underneath the road. And as they constructed the road, it appears that that line was, for some reason, had to, I mean, they had to remove it or remove the connections to it, so then therefore, the HOA is still trying to figure, okay, you know, we've been given one direction, and now we're having to adjust for, you know, more cost to repair at this point, and how do you get a line under the road to connect to the other side? So that's one issue. So we're trying to figure that one out. I know that there are also, we have the contractor that's working in that particular area that continues to utilize their heavy equipment and going over quite a bit of the landscape area. And what I have seen, and just in my first glance, is because of its heavy equipment, we don't know how many of those heads and lines have been damaged or valves at this point. I see that a lot of them are covered with debris. A lot of that, a lot of those landscape areas are highly impacted because of the large tractors, bulldozer, or backhoes that go over that particular area. So I'm assuming there's probably going to be a little bit more damage in those particular areas inside the right-of-way, what I mean, closer to the area that is maintained by the HOA. And then again, on the Western Drive, there still is, I know they removed the trash facilities out of there. I guess my question is, is this, is that they put a temporary ramp inside there, so they put some asphalt, and then they also large gravel in that area to impact because of the large trucks that were going and doing work. So we were just, another question in that particular area of Silverado is that, you know, is that going to be removed? And there had been some ruts that had been developed because of the heavy truck loads that have been going in there, so their park, all that grass is, it's completely impacted at this point. So I don't know, is there a plan? And maybe you can't answer it today and right now, but maybe we need to come together with some direction, maybe some coordination with the HOA to address those particular areas and see where we move forward from here, so they can have a clear understanding on what they're going to have to start ensuring that they have funds for it for repair and reinstallation of sprinkler heads and lines, and maybe even some of the signage that's been damaged here recently as well, because of the construction.
Councilmember Joanne Garcia is our project manager for that particular project. She sent me a pretty lengthy email explaining all the different issues that are involved there, and she, at least she did try to reach out to the HOA later this afternoon to try to meet with them to resolve some of those issues and get them straightened out. So, and of course, on the other project, which is a different one, that's Plum Creek Phase One project.
Yeah.
That's a different contractor, and we did not have our walkthrough as we planned to. It'll come up a little bit later.
Okay.
But we didn't have our walkthrough, but we're trying to get that walkthrough maybe later this week or next week, and that's going to be on a punch list to take care of all those issues and make sure it gets back in best condition that we can get it in.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
The Button Creek Interceptor, again, this really hasn't changed that much from the last time. We, the weather just kind of slowed us down, and we have one more major item to complete on that project. The wastewater treatment plant expansion will be bringing back, item back to council for a contract award to the apparent low bidder, and we're working on the process of trying to work on the budget for that particular, and funding that particular project. This is the project Councilmember Villa Lobos, you asked about. This is the interceptor Phase One, the final walkthrough scheduled for January, but like I said, we're trying to get that scheduled this week, and then if not, early next week, and we'll come up with a punch list, and that entrance will be taken care of that's there that you mentioned. This is about the consent agenda item number six. As you know, we completed Kyle Crossing. It's ready for that heavy-duty traffic that's going to be going through there. The section that we designed there is, we anticipated much heavier loads than usual, so it's a pretty substantial section, so we anticipate that living up to its 20-year design life. And that's all the presentation I had, if you have any questions.
Yeah, I have one, going back to Lehman Road. When we opened that up, there was, I've got some phone calls about it being a really bad, right where the two, the old road and new road met up, it was a really bad hump, and it was really dangerous. When the contractors do something like that, is there a procedure they have to follow on the roadway of putting up signage or something like that?
Which intersection are you asking?
That was, Scott, do you remember what part of that roadway was? Was it your hump?
Was it at Hiver?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to be closed off.
Yeah, but when they opened it up, it presented a real danger of somebody losing control of the vehicle, because there was a, I mean, it was a substantial drop on that. You know, I got a phone call, and later on I went and saw it, but yeah, it was a really big drop. What procedures do we have in place to get those contractors to make sure they put a proper signage in there when something like that happens?
We have inspection staff that monitor that project as usual, but we also have a contractor that knows he's responsible for the liability and safety of maintaining a good roadway while it's under construction. So if we're aware of that situation, and if we've driven it and we see that, we need to identify it and get with the contractor, make sure it's taken care of quickly.
And who went out there and took care of that, Scott, that day? I said that. Harper, I just want to thank you for being so quick with that, because it was a substantial drop-off off that road, so thank you for going out there so quickly. I know it was the holidays, so thanks for going out there out of your way. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Sheehan.
And continuing with Lehman Road, the transition at 150, is that going to be cleaned up and made a little bit better? It's gonna, it's a little rough.
We still have one more layer of material to put on that. Once we resolve the issue with the existing one, we'll be coming back with a second layer.
Okay. And also, does that mean that Lake Kyle Park is open?
Yeah, we have begun the process of moving our department back to Lake Kyle Park. It's going to take a little while, but we have started that.
So it is not open to residents to enjoy at this time, or is it?
Mariana, will you give us a date? What's that?
February 21st.
February 21st.
February 23rd, thank you very much. February twenty-third, thank you very much. January twenty-third, okay, perfect.
Even better.
So get ready with them fishing poles. Mm-hmm, all right, that was it.
Any other questions for Mr. Barba? I changed the language, this is obviously a standing item. I changed the language in this to CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation to make it more broad, because if there are questions that we have over any items of the consent agenda, Leon may or may not be the best one, so I wanted to have it available so we could, if there are questions that we could bring up, any staff member related to a consent agenda item at this point. Anybody have any additional questions? All right, thank you. All right, next up, consent agenda items number five, six, and seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Tenorio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items five, six, and seven.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Tenorio, seconded by Councilor McShale, that we approve agenda items number five, six, and seven. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, consider an possible action, request to utilize hotel occupancy taxes for Kayak Summit. Councilor Tenorio.
As you know, Kayak Summit is about to happen the end of this month. We are, well, looking for about $7,000 to transfer over from the HOT funds to the program itself. When the program was first brought to light, we, $20,000 was being given from TML to help fund it. However, it was not brought to the attention of staff that the city would not be receiving registration fees. So that leaves a shortage, and I'm asking that we authorize $7,000 from the HOT funds, because we are utilizing this to prepare packets to advertise our city with all of the, all of the students who will be coming into our area.
Pervez, or do we have any, I don't know where is Pervez here?
There is.
The, the $7,000, two questions, are they, do we have that balance unencumbered in our HOT funds? And do we have the ability to utilize HOT funds for this proposal?
Mayor, for the record, I'm Pervez Mahi, City's Director of Finance. The first part of your question, I can answer. We do have $7,000 in the HOT fund balance. The second part of your question, I'll let the city attorney address that, if HOT can, funds can be utilized for this purpose.
Okay, if the answer is yes, you can just say yes. Okay. Sure. Go ahead.
This just will impact the total amount that you are discussing here. Nobody knows us yet, the city manager, Kim Hilsenbeck, wherever she is, or anywhere. I met with one of our new corporations that are coming in today that I've had a couple of discussions with about this, and they surprised me. And then I just got a confirmation email that they are going to be a $1,000 sponsor for, for the summit. So ENF Technologies.
ENF, wow.
ENF Technologies has committed to be a $1,000 rainmaker sponsor for you.
Just through email confirmation at this point, though?
Yes, they, they just want to know what the next steps are that they have to do to, so I assume cut a check.
It's not confirmed yet, let's keep it.
Well, yeah, because the money hasn't been brought in, but when that money is brought in.
Yeah, it has been approved by corporate. But they just want to know what the next steps are, so.
We just need confirmation that they, that that is something we can do legally, because those. No, I mean, not, not the ENF side, the, that we can, whether or not we can utilize. It's, there's plenty of funds in that, and, but they're only allowed to be used for certain hotel tourism-related.
But thank you, Diana, that's awesome work, way to get out there and help our team.
Expenditures are authorized for advertising for promotional events that will bring citizens or bring people outside of your city to the city to stay in your hotels.
The summit would do that, right?
Yes.
Councilor McShale.
I just have a quick question. Have we been tracking the out-of-town bookings to our hotels? And how are, how are they looking, for the hotels?
TML generally handles all registrations.
We don't have to submit reports to them, though, do we, to, to the hotel?
No.
Folks?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, I'm Kim Hilsenbeck, for the record. I'm the Communications Manager, and I'm also the leader of Kayak. The hotel reservations are done directly through the hotel, which is Hampton Inn, and we can find out how many hotel rooms have been booked. I don't have that number now. Registration ends on January sixteenth for the early bird rate. Then they open up, you know, for whatever, for the conference. But the hotel has already closed its window for the, the lower rate, but we put out a lot of stuff to try to get people to do it, because it's a really good rate. Hampton Inn really came through in a big way. So when we need that information, we can ask the Hampton Inn, like, how many rooms did, did get reserved? We put a book of, I think, sixty rooms, fifty rooms aside. And of that fifty, I don't know how many yet have been booked. But we can get that information, just something that we don't have access to.
And what were we expecting for the total registration of the conference?
Based on what we've seen in the past from other Yak's, they gave us a list of how many attendees. We think it's probably safe to say about 250 students, and then their chaperones and the folks that come with them, like I and Howard would go to another city. So we're saying 300. But a lot of them are from the central Texas area and may not need a hotel.
Right.
There are tons of Yak's up in the Fort Worth and the Dallas area, and they come and they need hotels. So at least one night for most of them, some two nights, because we have the Pi Social, the Pi Social. So that's Friday night. So if they stay two nights, then obviously that, it's better for the Hampton Inn, so. I, I mean, I've, I've looked at this issue from, from the HOT rules, and because we will be advertising the city, our events and things that we do to an audience of about 300 people who are coming out of town, they will also be at Evo, so they're an entertainment facility, hotel, at least one, maybe two nights. And of course, the pack itself, you know, we, we get to showcase the city in a lot of different ways. So whatever you decide would be, would be great if we could have the extra money. And I think I just want to clarify really quickly about the, why we have a little discrepancy. So I went to a Yak two years ago, and I thought, wouldn't it be great to do that in Kyle? And then I opened my mouth and said those words to the people who run, the, the TML people. And they were like, that's a great idea, you can host it in Kyle. And I came back here and I told Jerry and I told Scott, I was like, hey, we're hosting the Yak Summit. So they told us that you would get $20,000, and then I wrongfully assumed that you would also get the $10,000 for the registration, plus the money, whatever money council would kick in. And two years ago, I didn't know what that amount would be. So I later found out clarification that the $20,000 is inclusive of all the registration as well. And that was not clear. I, I wrongfully assumed that it would be a $20,000 budget plus $10,000 for registration. Also, thank you, in more words than I can express, thank you. So that's why we're asking for some additional funding, to make sure that this is the best Yak ever, that these kids get a great experience, that they walk away thinking Kyle is amazing, because it is. And so anything we can do to really brand this and make it the absolute best that it can be, you know, from my heart, I'm grateful.
And how, I'm sorry, are you still looking for more volunteers to help?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. We have a lot of staff who've signed up, and we still have some more spots. And so we have a signup genius, which I believe I've shared with council, I'm happy to do so again. It's just a link, you can, you know, you've signed up for every spot available, I think.
Pretty much, yeah, that I could do, but I'm just saying, please send it out to everybody again.
We want such a representation of our city, of our business owners, of the fact that, you know, we're here and we're doing this as a team. I, the more folks that we can get to help, the better the event will be. So I appreciate all of you.
Willie and I are sponsors for the, for the Yak event, but what we're going to do is utilize our table that we get with our sponsorship to promote all the city businesses. So I'm going to walk around and get flyers and menus from all of the different companies to assure that everybody has visibility.
And we'll have, we'll have flyers for the Pi Festival, so, I mean.
And those will actually be in the, the bags as well.
Yes, and if, if there are any companies that want to add swag, you need about 300. That would be a fantastic way to donate and support, and, and do this as a community, you know, to really do it together. It's not just the city, I mean, it's, it's, it's Kyle, it's, it's everybody.
And isn't this the twentieth anniversary?
It is, 2020, twentieth anniversary, focus on your future. See how we did that? Any other questions that I am happy to answer?
I have a question for probably Pervez. Does the motion need to include a budget amendment? Or can we just direct to appropriate funds from the hotel occupancy tax to kayak? I don't remember, is it its own separate fund?
It's a separate fund, Mayor, and it will require a budget amendment. So in your motion, you can direct staff to bring back a budget amendment.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to bring back staff, to, to direct staff to bring back a budget amendment for $7,000 allocating months from hotel occupancy tax to the kayak group for the 2020 summit. It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Ellison. Any further consideration? Thank you, Councilor Tenorio, for bringing this up, it's a good use of those funds. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number nine, first reading and ordinance directing the installation of signs and traffic control devices at the intersection of Dorman Lane and FM sixteen twenty-six to prohibit certain left turns at the intersection. This was brought up by myself in consultation with residents in the community. At the last council meeting, we had Tech Dot here to provide their feedback. We gave staff an opportunity to engage some of the businesses in that area. And now we are, I'm fully committed to continue to move forward. There's a plan that staff has put together, and I'll let Mr. Sellers give a brief explanation of what that might look like.
I was looking for Chief Barnett, just in case there are questions about the outreach, so we're going to go grab him. What you have before you, Mayor and Council, is a design that we put together in-house. We shared this with Tech Dot and have received their, their approval to move forward with this design. So on the right, we're looking to the east, I guess, at the top of the slide would be east on sixteen twenty-six. Dorman Lane, you see a red line. That line demonstrates vertical delineators, which is basically those, those sticks that get run over fairly often, but they, they represent a temporary restriction to the travel, taking a right out only onto sixteen twenty-six from Dorman, as well as narrowing down that lane on the ACC driveway to a right out only as well. The design is a half pork chop, so it, it allows a left-hand turn from sixteen twenty-six onto either ACC or Dorman. Chief is here, and just very quickly, have him describe the outreach opportunities.
Yes, sir. Again, Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. So I made contact with all of the businesses in that immediate area around the corner, informed them of what the plans were going to be, gave them a tentative timetable, even though nothing's set in stone. We understood that. Also relayed the information as we know it from Tech Dot regarding the traffic signal that's coming in the future. And 100% of the people that I spoke to at the businesses were glad that these changes are coming. Many of them reported seeing either accidents or near accidents on a routine basis, and they were very appreciative of the efforts that are being undertaken, and they've all been informed.
Okay.
The final thing is, Tech Dot did ask if we would place a message board in advance of the, the turn.
That was my next question, you read my mind.
They asked for a week long, having that basically further back onto Dorman, saying right.
Close to the roundabout?
Close to the roundabout.
Yep, that's perfect. So we have that capacity?
We don't own a message board, but we'll find one. It's about $80 to $100 a day to have it out there.
Any questions, comments? Councilor Tenorio.
I've never been so excited about something you've brought forward in all of these years. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance directing the installation of signs and traffic control devices at the intersection of Dorman Lane and FM sixteen twenty-six to prohibit certain left turns at the intersection.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Tenorio, seconded by Councilmember Ellison. Any further discussion, Councilor Velos?
This is a perfect spot for a roundabout.
We never talked about that before. Maybe we could put it up at sixteen twenty-six in Coles, what do you think?
I can see the Gladiator races through there already.
Don't tempt me, don't tempt me. I'm glad to have, I, I've also been engaging the community, I know others in council as, as well. The feedback, especially from those who live in Plum Creek, is nearly high nineties percent unanimous and plentiful to, to feel like this is the right call. The, the traffic signal, will it communicate that the, that, I'm sorry, the, the sign, message board, will it communicate that this is temporary and that it, a light will be installed in the summer? Is that something we could?
That might be a little more.
Just, I understand, but I, in my mind, it's important that folks know, and maybe they just, they'll figure it out when they figure it out, but.
We can program it to say whatever, it'll just be multiple changes.
Well, I'm, I'm, as I do, I'm thinking out loud when I'm asking that question. And obviously, in my opinion, whatever staff thinks is professional and appropriate to communicate most efficiently is what I would support there, I just.
Yeah, we could probably put a, you know, coming soon type of permanent sign on the right, you know, signal coming soon.
If you think it's good, if you, if you don't, I don't, personally don't care. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Is there any objection to this being finally passed? Hearing none, it's finally passed. All right, next up, agenda item number ten, direct staff to install yield to pedestrian signage in Center Street crosswalks. Councilor Coach.
Scott, you can go ahead and take it from here.
All right, thank you. So this is a, from a suggestion from the Texas Downtown report that we had not too long ago. They, they had shown another downtown that had a sign that was very similar to this one. This is a sign that would be permanently affixed here downtown along our crosswalk areas. So we have asked Tech Dot to go from eighty-one, Front Street, and Main Street, those, those three intersections, to install these permanently. You can see there's a little breakaway on the bottom. We can't do it at Burleson Street since it's a signalized intersection, but we're waiting on final approval from their traffic division, and hopefully we receive that. I know we've got tentative approval from their, from our area engineer, but we can put those in very quickly right in between our, our lanes.
Questions, Councilor McShale? Hang on, I'm sorry, this is, do you want the floor, Councilor?
No, no, no.
All right, Councilor McShale.
I just want to make sure, so you said that they were going on the sidewalks? We can't put it in the middle of the street so people can actually see it?
These would go right between the two stripes.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, because that's the only place people are going to see it.
Councilor Rizzo.
I've got a question, I should probably know the answer to this, but I don't. What is our current speed limit through downtown?
Thirty miles an hour through downtown Center Street. Now, because it's a state road, they would have to do a speed study if we were to ask them to change it to twenty-five, you know.
And that's what I was at going with that, and I was hoping to bring down. So how, how do we start the process of slowing the traffic down there, doing the speed study?
If the council would like them to do one, we can make that request immediately, just to, I guess, make that part of your motion, to ask Tech Dot to begin one. I, I did talk to them about it today, and they, they said that they didn't think it would be an issue to do one, but we would just need to make the request.
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to direct Tech Dot to do a field, a speed study in downtown Kyle.
For twenty-five miles an hour.
For twenty-five mile an hour, yeah.
All right, it's been motioned by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Tenorio, that we direct staff to seek out a speed study from Tech Dot to lower the speed from thirty, with a goal of lowering the speed from thirty to twenty-five miles an hour along Center Street. Is there any further discussion? We still have the, the signage here to deal with. Councilor McShale.
I just also want to make sure that when they do this study, they take into account our morning traffic and our evening traffic, so that.
Speed limit zero.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, see, I was going to say, this is not an issue.
That's why I just want to make sure that they take, you know, that into account, because, yeah.
Do you mind giving me the parameters of the twenty-five mile an hour? Are you thinking from eighty-one to?
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking from just that side of the railroad tracks down to Burleson, is what I'm doing.
To Burleson?
Yeah.
Railroad tracks to Burleson?
I said to Revel.
So basically eighty-one to Burleson, or you want to go all the way to Revel?
Thoughts, Councilmembers? Well, the analysis, we, we can have them perform it to, all the way to Revel, and then maybe we can make a decision based on their analysis?
That would work.
So yeah, might as well just go eighty-one to Revel then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thoughts on the, the proposal to install the crosswalk signs along as traffic control device? Councilmember Ellison?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Coach, I certainly appreciate this. This is what I was hoping would come from that downtown study, so I certainly appreciate your attention to, to that, I think. Sorry, that was one of the, the key components that Catherine, with the Texas Downtown Association, proposed in their observations, both in their physical walkthrough as well. We, we want a downtown that's pedestrian-friendly. And, you know, I mean, we have staff members, looking at my man, Mr. Koontz back there, that continuously walk our downtown and different things like that, and for some. And for some reason, I don't know, folks don't seem to know that you're supposed to yield to pedestrians. So I'm happy to support this. I'm grateful. Or people backing out of these along here. I don't get it. Anyway. But no, highly in support of this and I look forward to us continuing to talk through other ideas that we, were presented through that study as well. So, thank you.
If there's no objections, I'm going to, I'm going to add on to your motion, if you don't mind. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion and add direct, that giving direction to staff to install the yield pedestrian signs in the Center Street crosswalks as discussed in council.
Second.
Alright, it's been motioned by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tenorio, that we amend. Is there discussion on that amendment? The vote will add it and then we'll have to vote again. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. So now we have the original motion on the table with both items presented. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, city managers report. Mr. Sellers.
Mayor, council, just several quick items. First, you may have noticed around town are wayfinding signs going up. Please look around. I think there are, I want to say 17 signs roughly, but they're throughout town and they, they look pretty sharp. So keep your eye out for those, but they're not all up yet. But they're, they're going up now. You can see some, there's one right across the street even. Just from calendaring, I, I personally am out of town next Monday through Wednesday. So James will be acting in my stead during that time. Wednesday, we do have the Stormwater Conference. That's at the Performing Arts Center from 8:00 AM basically till end of day. Thursday night is your TERZ meeting, the TERZ Board meeting at 7:00 PM here in this, this room. And then Friday at 2:00 PM, you have the ENF groundbreaking ceremony. That is on Coles Crossing at the ENF site. I believe it's 1550 Coles Crossing. So please be there for that. It's going to be a great event with obviously a great new business coming to town. That's all next, all next week, yes.
Any questions, comments? Councilwoman Rashil, now we're going to move into executive session and that'll be the end of the public portion of the meeting.
Okay. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics. Pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071. RFQ for 104 South Burleson Street. The Intermandico Development Agreement. And I think we've done all the others, correct? Okay. Then possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551.072. Center Street, Old Stage, Coach Road Project. Convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087. Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city. Project Wild Blue Restaurant Incentive Program, incentive for downtown property.
Can you go ahead and add the other ones back in as well?
Oh, okay. Alright. So back to pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071. TDS Contract, Veterans Memorial, Police Department Facility Update, and Uptown Park.
Alright, thank you. We're in executive session. Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. There was no action taken, or all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. No action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.